Good evening. This is the Board of Education regular meeting. It is Wednesday, June 25th. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Call the roll, please.
Ford.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
Smutney.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Dewitt.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And if now, if you will all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Davis, the land acknowledgement.
Yes, as we gather today, we want to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we're on the ancestral homelands of the Ho'ochunk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respects to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you. And now approval of agenda. I would like to recommend that we have agenda and not non-agenda speakers come before we do board and administrative reports. Is there a motion?
So move, Barb.
Second, Kelly. Call the roll, please.
Yes. Herzog.
Yes.
Hess.
Aye.
Smutney.
Yep, aye. Sorry, I messed up. Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Wyman.
Yes.
Dewitt.
Yes.
Ford.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have one person signed up this evening for the non-agenda related public forum. Mr. Hurt.
Thank you so much, President Wyman, Dr. Davies, and members of the school board. My name is Mike Hurt, and I live at 1808 Ohio Street here in Oshkosh. I'll just be real quick to the point, not to talk about myself, but it kind of gives the framework for where I'm going. I served a total of 31 years military time. That was guard reserve active duty. 9/11 happened, and I ended up going to Iraq twice, Afghanistan once, and then to the Horn of Africa twice. Began as a private, wrapped up as lieutenant colonel. In the civilian side of life, I was very active in the substance abuse field. For 10 years, I sat on the state council on alcohol and other drug abuse. Also, I was the chairman of intervention and treatment for the state of Wisconsin, and I'm a vautage myself, but I ran the chemical dependency unit at Mercy Medical Center when it was on Hazel Street. So with that being said, and faith is a great part of my life, there's a program out there for veterans to obtain their high school diplomas, and there's certain criteria that needs to be met. And I'll just say a first name. Individual named Bernie is, one area of the qualifications he's lacking in, but I want to toss this out to the board because I think it, if you could rule in favorable of it, that'd be appreciated. His what's up? He ended up, he's Korean War era veteran, and he ended up with a less than honorable discharge, and it was because of his drinking. And I can tell you back in the day, drinking, if anything, was encouraged among the armed forces, and the challenge is, it was part of the culture, but what were the solutions if somebody was in trouble? None. It was kick 'em out. Well, Bernie in 1974 went around the tables of AA, gotta be careful, 12-step community in the Oshkosh area, and he got sober. And he's been married for over 40 years now. He worked actually at Rockwell for over 30 years. He got his pilot's license. I'm an Army guy, so I like to stay on the growl, but he got his pilot's license. He was very active. He was a docent at EAA, and just has really turned his life around. And this is where I ask for a little mercy and grace. Right now Bernie is in hospice care. We've had some good conversations, and it's very important. I get, you know, in some ways, I'm looking at maybe part of his closure, but that high school diploma is just, means everything for him to get his high school diploma. And, you know, I guess I would ask if, within your hearts, you know, that you could take a look at this situation and rule in favorable of him and grant him, and maybe that'll be that last thing that's given him that closure to kind of send him off and be able to feel good about things as he closes his life. So that's just me. So any questions? Very open.
We can't answer questions in this format, unfortunately.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
But we sure would like to thank you for coming in this evening and giving us your perspective and items for us to think about.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I truly appreciate your time. I know you folks have a lot of things to do and appreciate you listening to me. Yeah. Thank you very much.
And we appreciate you and all of your service to our country.
Thank you for your service.
We have no one else that has signed up for agenda or non-agenda, so we will move on to board administrative reports. First of all, the president's report. I have some recognition of retirees that I don't want to read this evening. First one is Julie Conrad Peters, Assistant Superintendent of Operations. Been with the district since 1992. Amanda Curtis, kindergarten teacher at Jefferson Elementary since 2001. And Vicky Poyer, IST Curriculum High School District-wide, been with the district since 2002. Would you like to open it up for any comments? Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. I think I first met Julie Conrad Peters when she was a science teacher at West High, and we had a program called Curriculum Set Aside, and that was intended to provide equipment for those content areas that were equipment-dependent, including not only science but music and FIED, among others. And I always found Julie to be very fair-minded in terms of working with those dollars. I would go to her and say, this is what we have for this year. Will you work with the staff and figure out what are the needs? And then we would address those. Over the years, I know that her colleagues have described her as someone who would listen to them and would go to bat for them. And so I want to thank Julie for your dedicated service to our students, families, and the community, and wish you all the best for success in your next chapter of professional development and growth. Thank you. Vicky Poyer, I've known since she first came to the district as a conscientious social studies teacher focused on success of students. She's always been passionate about students and was always easy to talk with, and when I would visit her classroom, she shared that same warm welcoming smile with students as well as adults she interacted with. During her time in the district, just like Julie, she's taken on several roles during her tenure, serving as an IST coordinator and more recently, the coordinator of the technical vocational and technical program. I want to thank Vicky for everything she's done to promote student success and wish her the best as she moves on to her next chapter in life. And for all three of these individuals, to wish them a long, healthy, and happy retirement, and to thank them for their many years of dedicated service to our students, families, and our community. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Well, Julie and I go back a long way, and we've done some interesting things, starting with Oshkosh for Ed- well, it even started before that, but she was very involved in Oshkosh for Education with our referendums before the 2000 referendum. We were the team that went out and talked to many, many, many of the community groups to let them know what was happening with the referendum, and it was while Stan Mack was here, and it really was, I think, one of the first times that the community became re-engaged in what was happening with our schools, and it was a very, very exciting time, and we've been able to build on that. Julie and I went to Florida to observe, I don't know exactly what we were observing, but-
The Educational Foundation.
Yeah, the Educational Foundation and how that was operating in Florida. We brought back some interesting facts, and it really was probably, not probably, it was the start of the Education Foundation for Oshkosh. And that was also part of Oshkosh for Education because we knew that we needed to be raising money, significant money, to protect some of the programs and some of the programming opportunities that we had. So Julie, it's going to be tough without you. You've worn a lot of hats in this district, and we appreciate you, and personally, I'm very excited for you in this new opportunity to be a superintendent in Florida next to your sister and your son and his family. Vicky, exciting things happening with the CTE world, and I hope, I know, that that area is one that we want to continue to focus on with all the vocational opportunities. We've made tremendous strides already, and I know that she has set us up with a wonderful base to be able to build on. So Vicky, wishing you the best also. Amanda, I do not know you, but you've done well at Jefferson, and it's an exciting time for all of our retirees, and we wish you the very, very best.
I just have a few things.
I'm sure. Yes, good.
So first of all, want to affirm and thank Vicky for her service. Certainly, we've got a strong foundation with CTE. We've made a lot of progress, certainly in my time over the last four years. A lot of that is due to Vicky's leadership and community connections that she has. So just want to really lift her up and appreciate all of that work, and that'll be something we'll certainly carry forward as we're moving on. And then with Julie specifically, so just a couple of things that strike me. One, you know, when I came, had the opportunity to come back and interview at Oshkosh, one of the things that was really neat for me was to be able to reconnect with some familiar faces, and Julie was one of those faces. So we were teaching colleagues at Oshkosh West back in the 1900s when we taught there. And so to be able to have somebody that I knew was just a consummate professional and that was at the executive team level was very helpful for me, to be honest, and just kind of calming my nerves. She's also the first one that, her and Kim were the first ones that showed up to talk to my wife to let her know where all the shopping is and that that'll be taken care of at the first meeting. I remember that distinctly. And as you talk to people around the community about Julie, what you'll get is a person who is a consummate professional, somebody who's service-driven and who is focused on kids, and whether that's inside of the district office, whether that's at our schools, or out at the Boys and Girls Club, any of the places, sorry, any of the places where she's served, you'll get that over and over and over. So her willingness to be able to take on operations, which was a different side of the house, for her expertise has taken off, and that's evidenced through successful referendum, which she was very much an integral part of passing, and that'll be, you know, beyond the people that we touch, you know, certainly the buildings are part of her legacy, and we know that Lake Wales is in good hands as we're moving forward. So, and it's always nice to know somebody in Florida. So certainly, well wishes from myself and our family to Julie and her family. So thank you for your service.
President's report tonight is going to be the mission moment. I have a new mission moment for you, and it's the Oshkosh Recreation Department and Cable Helmbrecht. And the Oshkosh Recreation Department is led by Cable, and it continues to serve students and the community members throughout the entire year, but especially in the summer. I've been talking with Cable, and this summer, they have 3,000 participants in their summer programs, 2,800 of them are youth. And he also has told me that he was very excited about the recent results of the Community Votes Oshkosh 2025 campaign. In the sports, recreation, and fitness category, they placed second. In family recreation and youth sports recreation, those are both second, and first place in swimming lessons. And in the parent and childcare category, they placed first also. So he's very, very excited about that. He's very, and we are too, excited about the partnership between the rec department and the Sheldon Nature Committee. Recently, they've planted 800 trees, and they're reforesting that whole area because they lost most of their trees to the Emerald Ash Bore, and last year was a terrible year for reforestation because of the wet, wet conditions. The summer program has also been very successful on playgrounds. They have five playgrounds that they are at. The first one is at the New Menominee Playground, also at Trager, Franklin, Oakwood, and Oaklawn. And they have some great programs where they do games and activities and crafts for kids ages six through 13, and they also have a hiking camp, which is very, very popular with some of the older kids. And that's just a small amount. If you look at the rec department, the opportunities are absolutely endless. The swimming lessons this year are going to be at West High School, and they're also going to be using Pollock Pool, which is very exciting, so they're partnering with the city. So they continue to offer activities. Some of the adult activities are cribbage and basketball and tennis, and the list goes on and on and on. So I just want to thank and thank Cable and his department for all the wonderful opportunities and things that he is doing for everyone, all of our community members in Oshkosh. And it also is so wonderful because it keeps them safe and fun and educational. And to learn more, go check out their website at oshkoshrecdepartment.com. So thank you. My mission moment for this evening. Superintendent's report.
Okay. Here's the, I love what's going on. I get busy across the, across the system as we're getting into summer school. So this summer, students in our Language Emergence Summer School course at Oaklawn Elementary have been diving into the three-digit addition to reinforce their learning and foster teamwork. Students collaboratively solved equations and created posters showcasing their work. This activity not only strengthens their math skills, but also emphasizes the use of academic language in English, promotes effective group collaboration. As was mentioned earlier, the Oshkosh Rec Department is thrilled to announce the success in the Community Votes for Oshkosh 2025. Thanks to overwhelming support, community support, the department earned top honors for several categories: gold in family recreation and youth sports and recreation; additionally achieved platinum for their outstanding swimming lessons, including youth swimming lessons. The rec department and our entire district is incredibly grateful for our community for allowing us to be part of their lives, families, and fun. So thanks for everybody who came out to support us. Congratulations to our Oshkosh West High School girls' flag football team for their stellar performance at the recent Green Bay Packers Flag Football Open. Our Wildcats landed in the championship bracket and were able to showcase their individual talents, earning third place in the Skills Challenge. Special congratulations to Lauren Klinger, who, for her impressive showing, finishing as the third fastest girl. So congratulations. Before the school year ended, Oshkosh North math teacher Miranda Hop was honored as the WIXXX and Marion University Wisconsin Teacher of the Month. As part of the nominations, a former student shared how Ms. Hop provided invaluable support, making her final year of school enjoyable and helping her reach graduation. They described Ms. Hop as "so much more than just a teacher." This former Spartan praised her as "a loving, caring individual and a wonderful role model who fosters independence and teaches important life lessons." For this well-deserved recognition, Miranda received three higher education credits from Marion University. It is a great honor to see our educators recognized and lifted up by the students, by those that they impact. So congratulations. Math fun continues with our, this summer, at Oaklawn, at Oaklawn Elementary, our summer school students getting ready for kindergarten and getting ready for first grade have been rocking numbers and counting songs and addition equations. They're building up their strong foundation for the new school year for a strong start. So keep up the great work over at Oaklawn. During the first week of summer break, our students became young inventors at Camp Invention at Lakeside Elementary. This National Inventors Hall of Fame program encourages creative problem-solving through engaging STEM challenges. Students tackled projects like building their own claw arcade machines and designing control panels for their in-control road trip. A big thanks to our middle school and high school leaders who volunteered their time to make this happen. This also is a time for students, or there's also a time for students to join the second Camp Invention, which is happening August 4th through the 8th at Menominee Elementary School. You can find the registration on our website. Reduced pricing is also available for eligible families. Also thrilled to announce the celebration of our graduation of our first-ever Oshkosh Schools Academy class of 2025. This exceptional group of community leaders dedicated the past six months to understanding the intricacies of district operations and exploring opportunities for deeper involvement. One participant shared, "Attending Oshkosh Schools Academy has been a powerful and eye-opening experience. It gave me a front-row seat into the inner workings of our schools and left me deeply inspired." The application period for our upcoming school year cohort is now open. Applications are due on September 19th, and the class will meet for the first time in October. You can learn more and apply for our second Schools Academy cohort on our website. And finally, just a list of places that I've been out and about in the community and across the state. So that concludes the superintendent's good news report for tonight.
Thank you. Verbal report from June 11th, board listening session. Dr. Coleman. Okay.
It came up pretty quickly. Give me one.
Take your time.
Yeah, I don't know what's happening. Could I potentially request that we come back to this?
Certainly can.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, actually, here we go.
All right.
Yeah, why don't we come back to me?
Mrs. Kiffmeyer, student involvement in activities for the spring.
Just a quick update, the exciting part about student involvement, we moved from three stars to four stars. We just squeaked in there, hitting 60%, so that's exciting. We had an increase of over 3% from the winter to the spring for participation, which pushed us over the top to the four-star rating. We still have disproportionality between our subgroups, and that's something that we are truly focusing on. However, I do want to note that we did have a modest increase in participation, about 2% in each of our subgroups, so we're starting to tweak away at that. Some of the things that we have to help remove barriers as we move into the fall of '25, '26, thanks to your support as a board in April, you approved getting rid of extracurricular and sports fees, so that will no longer be a barrier, that all students should be able to participate free of charge. So that's a good thing. Other things that both of our high schools are actively doing that are different than they've done before going into '25, '26 school year is that there'll be a survey for all of our students to take, 9/12 in September, to identify what interests they have and what barriers for involvement currently exist for them, so hopefully, we can get to some of those root causes. And that survey has already been reviewed by our athletic directors and our principals, so it's ready to go right away in September. They are going to be sending magnets to all of our families in the summer that will include the start times and some information about sports. For some of our new families to the district or potentially new in high school, a lot of families don't understand that fall sports start before the school year starts, so that we want to make sure we get on top of that. So that'll be sent out, along with information on clubs and activities that are currently at both high schools, so that'll go out this summer. There also will be a calendar of events on our newsletter, on the newsletters that they sent home to be maintained and updated so that they can clearly be communicated. We're also going to increase visibility, I guess I would say, and opportunities with information at our open houses in the, right before our school starts, as well at an eighth grade open house. And then really being purposeful during W hour and Excel to highlight some of our different clubs and activities during that time, and then let them know how they can get involved in those pieces. Something new from North next year that they're going to try for the first time is doing Spartan Strong Start for freshmen, which is where all of the freshmen will move through different rotations, and the expectation is that they are to sign up for at least one club, sport, or activity, and then attend one of the sessions in September. So that will be something new. And then our athletic director at North also went to VEL and did an interest survey with the students, and that was shared with club advisors and coaches, so that if they don't come to us, we'll try to reach out to them this time. And then West has what we call, something unique for West is West's Best Crew, which is made up of upperclassmen, and they go into freshman-level homerooms to talk about clubs, activities, and opportunities to get involved. So that's been really the push. One of my rocks this 90 days has been like, how are we going to try to increase participation? What does that look like? Because our goal obviously is to get to that five-star rating, which is at that 70%, so we still have 10% to chip away at. So hopefully, we can get there. Questions that you have for me?
I appreciate all the actions that you've outlined that hopefully will increase student participation, because we know that when students are engaged, they tend to be more successful in their classrooms, and we tend to have fewer discipline issues. So I applaud you and your team for working on those actions. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Coleman.
There were too many tabs open the first time. Doing too much work. All right, here we go. So at the June 11th listening session, there were five participants. During that session, participants raised several concerns centered on equity, consistency, and inclusivity across district practices. There was a recommendation made to improve multilingual access by providing clear directions on how to translate the parent portal and proactively offering language support for platforms like Infinite Campus and Canvas. Additional feedback noted inconsistencies between the high schools regarding prom costs and then good standing expectations and how pre-college programming is communicated, suggesting a need for district-wide alignment and parity particularly between Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West High School. Additionally, there were concerns raised about the language used in behavior reports, advocating for terms like participant over offender or victim and avoiding policing or carceral language. Questions emerged about how staff are trained to code behaviors and how behavior history is addressed with students. Members who shared feedback also questioned the practice of taking away Chromebooks as a disciplinary action, noting the impact that such disciplinary action would have on student learning and access to course materials. Additionally, feedback was provided about the need for equitable access to behavior reports, and clarity on teacher access was also discussed. And then lastly, there were suggested, suggestions that included reimagining family engagement, especially in schools that receive federal funds Title I and Title III. Title I being pertaining to addressing socioeconomic barriers, and Title III, language barriers, so those grants are for those purposes. So using those funds to engage families more strategically, and then also ensuring, there was a recommendation for playground paint refreshers occurring on a scheduled basis and not relying on principal requests. Finally, there was a call to disaggregate iReady data by race, language, and ability in the June report. It was noted that that same data is presented in the fall, and it is disaggregated, but there were certainly questions about in the June overview report, if it would be helpful to- were certainly questions about in the June overview report, if it would be helpful to make that disaggregation available more immediately. And then also lastly, to clarify information about the use of the net promoter score in district survey. That includes summary from feedback provided at the June 11th listening session, very lively discussion, and as always, we appreciate community members to provide us with feedback and input to strengthen our processes.
My question is, I believe that some of those areas have been addressed already. Can you talk to us about the areas that have changed?
Absolutely. So one, there were most of these areas actually have been addressed, so I'll start with the providing directions for families to access the district website as well as instructions on accessing portals using a translation option. So that is an option that's available on the district site. We are not able at this time to translate the language on our Canvas portals, but we are able to use language tools so that families can interpret the language that's on there. And we've committed to providing resources at the beginning of the year and then throughout the year so that our outreach efforts also help families navigate those platforms. Additionally, the concerns raised about student access, or sorry, teacher access to student behavior reports from either previous years or previous classrooms, we are switching over to a new data management or student information system platform, and that will provide more parameters and barriers to what information is accessible as it pertains to previous behavior infractions. Additionally, the feedback as it pertains to good standing and the student handbooks, Director Miller has engaged in work with our secondary principals clarifying language or moving language as it pertains to good standing. There are other handbooks like the Athletic Code that also requires some work as to bring parity between how we use good standing to make determinations about student participation. Is there a particular one that I'm missing?
I think the good standing and as it related to sports was interesting. It used to be a percentage and now it's a number. Am I saying that correctly? It used to be a percentage of the season that you had to sit out and now it's...
That was middle, at least that was in the middle school from the education committee members that were discussing. It was now it is according apparently one quarter or one eighth. But I think there is still work on the consistent definition of good standing.
Of the whole thing, yeah.
Yep. And then lastly, the family engagement component, so we did clarify that Title I and Title III funds, certainly a portion of those funds are designated specifically for family outreach and family engagement. And so we've begun our processes of reimagining what those opportunities look like, so if our impact is the scale of our impact, if that is not reaching enough families, and it sounds like that's what the feedback was for us, we have the opportunity to reimagine what family engagement looks like and also to ask our families what engagement opportunities make the most sense for them. So we will do that in the fall as well.
Okay. That's great feedback. Questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Staff engagement survey. Mrs. Johnson.
Good evening. Tonight I'll be sharing with you our ongoing efforts for improving our employee engagement, which is a key performance indicator that represents 25% of our engagement and communication core area. We do continue to use the Gallup Q12 Employee Engagement Survey, and it is administered by CISA 6. So after each survey, we take that information and it informs us on what we will be doing district-wide and also building-wide, building on strategies and action steps that we'll be moving forward with to build a more engaged work staff. As outlined in your report, our spring survey had 1,140 participants. Forty-eight percent of those participants reported being engaged compared to 54% in fall, showing a decline. We found these results to align with the same results that we had in spring of 2024, which showed us that there's a reoccurring pattern. The percentage of employees identified as actively disengaged rose slightly from 5% in fall to 8% in the spring. So while our spring survey did show a decline, I we thought it important to note that we're still 17% higher than the national average, which is 31%, and those numbers are all based on organizations that do use the Gallup Q12 Employee Engagement Survey. So after reviewing that data and realizing that there was a possible pattern in those spring surveys, I consulted with CISA 6 and learned quickly that our district is the last district to have the spring survey. Found out that CISA 6 is actually the only other one after us. She shared Rochelle shared with me that most districts offer it in April. So we have decided that we are going to shift our spring survey from May to April, which will allow us to take that data, look at those strategies and action steps, and still start putting them into place that same school year instead of starting it in the summer and going into the fall. This change will align again with regional practice. It again allows us to act this school year and supports improving our staff engagement and retention heading into the next school year. Your report also shares with you that our long-term goal is to be at that 60% engagement percentage while our actively disengaged at 3% or less. So our short-term goal, of course, is to get again back up above that 50% range for our engaged employees, putting us back on track for our long-term vision. It's also worth noting that our retention rates are decreasing. In the last three years, I've shared with you that those percentages ranged from 12.4 to 13.1%. This year, we're standing at about 9.8%. These numbers are pulled from August to July, so we still could have some resignations from now through July, and I'll be sure to update the board on those retention rates during the February 2026 workshop.
Is that just clarification?
Yeah.
Is that turnover rates?
Yeah, just retention. We don't include retirements, termination, no, we do include terminations, so terminations and resignations. So those things that we can't stop, you know?
Okay, so 9.8% that have resigned.
Resigned, yes.
And last year, last year was 12 points something?
Yeah, the last three years, they've been ranging between 12.4 and 13.1.
So that's better. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't 9% of people retained.
No.
So we might have had a lot of conversation.
Foot side, yes. And then when I looked at those specific administrator turnover numbers, last year we had four resignations. We also had some retirements in there, and then it resulted in six transfers within buildings within our district. And this year, we've had two resignations with our administrator group. So really, just looking at our spring results, we can see we have some work to do to get those numbers back up. By shifting our spring survey and acting on the feedback within this scheme school year and maintaining a shared commitment to continuous improvement, we're confident that we can move the needle back in that 50 to 60% range in the long range. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah, do you want to?
Go ahead.
No, 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 please.
Well, I'm just wondering if you could maybe give a little bit more insight as to what happened looking at the fall of 2024 to the spring of 2025? Like, what do you think happened as far as like the drop?
When I was talking with Rochelle at CISA 6, really in looking at when we give our survey in May, a lot of times our teachers are looking at the end of the school year, all the things that they have yet to do by the end of the year. So giving it in April, we're hoping that that will allow for not to be focusing so much on the end of the year and focusing on their engagement within the district.
So then, next year, when this is given in April, we should see this?
That is our hope, yes.
Jump back up?
Yes, to see if that is the pattern and if it continues, what else we need to do to try and support our employees from fall to spring and seeing if our action steps and our strategies aren't aligning with what aligning with what they're looking for and needing.
So I mean, not to be a jerk, but looking at the fall of 2023 to the spring of 2024, it's pretty, I mean, what, there's a 1% difference in the percent of engaged employees? So I guess.
Many fewer respondents in fall of '23. Well, 100 or so.
Correct, and that's the time where we moved our survey to align with our professional development days so that way buildings can bring all their employees together to offer the survey to them. And this year, we took additional steps from the non-teaching side, so those in maintenance, custodial, central office, to get them involved in completing the survey as well.
I don't... Is it okay?
Go ahead.
On your side?
Well, I was just gonna ask, do we break this down by school and look at it that way ever?
Yes, each principal has their information for their individual school that they look at to see what their two highest questions were, to see what their two lowest questions were, so that way they can work with their employees within their building on what they want to work on as far as strategies and action steps within their building.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess a couple things. One, we never like to see these numbers go down. Yes, teachers are probably a little more frustrated in May than April, so maybe that that's a solution. But I'm guessing in the prior years, we gave this survey at the same time, and I'm also looking at the fall survey numbers of the prior years, and those numbers didn't have that type of change. So for whatever reason, hopefully it's due to timing, a decent percentage of people from the beginning of the year to the end of the year became less engaged. So I think it's something that we definitely need to keep track of, because there could potentially or potentially not be an underlying reason. However, the good piece of news is that we're retaining more employees, which I've thought for a while that was going to start to happen, because we've given significant pay increases over the last four years, I mean, the max, right? So pays increased a lot in all sectors. Is that what you think is a leading? Because I heard like before, I just heard this, but it was a lot harder keeping pairs and things like that before, right? And now we're refilling those positions right away? That's correct?
Yeah, we are filling our positions much quicker. I think that is a leading indicator, but also just looking at the action steps and the strategies that we are putting in place in buildings and letting our employees know that we are listening to them and also sharing with you that we are continuing to give those state interviews. We created that group of employees to come together to look at ways that we can recognize them, looking at incentives, looking at different ways of benefits, ways that we can support them in those ways. So I'm hoping that all of those reasons are why our employees are deciding to stay with the Oshkosh High School District.
Because that's really encouraging and saves time and money, you know, and having to train new employees and trying to find qualified people, so that's really encouraging. I guess we'll wait to see on if there's an underlying problem as to why the engagement numbers are have dropped or if it just has to do with timing. I mean, I guess we'll know that, you know, in a year, or probably actually in fall, because if fall dips even a little more, then we'll have to say, hey, what's up?
I think I'll... So you said all the years prior, we had been typically giving it in May, right?
Yes.
Right, so you're proposing to go to April now?
Correct.
And so I would, you know, I would respectfully disagree with the interpretation. I look at this and say, from the spring, we seem to always be at 48. The thing that changed this year is we had 54 in the fall, and that's great, but that could have just simply been we had Tyrese come and give convocation, people got excited.
Really?
That little thing like that could do that. So I don't look at this and say, things have changed and I'm concerned about this in any way, shape, or form. But so too, I would say, when you come and show us April results next year and we compare and there's an increase, I can also imagine, though, that people do get burned out by May, and so I'd expect to see an increase, and that isn't necessarily indicative of a great success either. But it's, you know, so to some extent, I understand why you want to do it, but I also, I think I always want to encourage consistency as to how or why, unless there's a really good justified reason. So just my comments. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
I would just like to add that, I mean, I'm fully in favor of moving it to April, not because of the statistics, I'm in favor because then we can give very measurable feedback and take action still in that year to ensure that we don't get that May dip, if that's really what's going on. And I think it's really important that obviously staff, at least I would, need extra support in May, and we need to get people on the right track going into the next year. And so I'm in extreme favor, and it seems like we are kind of out of best practice with neighboring school districts on how to collect this kind of information. So I think that that's a really good move, and I hope that it gives us some good data, and then more importantly, gives the staff the support that's needed.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Under major point number three F, rather, one of the things I noted and was appreciated was the fact that question notes that we encourage leaders and supervisors to actively involve team members in decision-making processes like goal-setting and addressing challenges. I know that one of the things that we self-evaluate as a board on is including staff in things like the handbooks and other documents so that they are involved in the decision-making and are involved in their work, their work lives. So I know you've made an effort to do that with the student handbook, or excuse me, the staff handbook, which I think we're voting on later tonight, where you had indicated at a previous meeting that you had involved various employee groups in taking a look at that, including the piece on the number of weeks of vacation for all employees. So I applaud your efforts in that realm to make sure that we are engaging our staff, which also fits in with one of the other key performance indicators in terms of how we take care of our staff and look out for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Davis?
Yeah, I just wanted to look up, thank Sabrina for all of her work and her department's work on this. So we've also, as we've rolled up this year, our school strategic plans, staff engagement is one of the key performance indicators that we have for each school. And so each school has a plan based on their data that they get in the fall and in the spring. Each school and their staff at the school specifically builds some action plans to be able to increase engagement at their site, because what we know about engagement is it's in the environment to which you're working in and you're interacting with. And so being able to empower those teams to be able to create some actions and some advocacy for what their needs are is a constant, you know, we do that twice a year based on this feedback. And so just wanted to look that up, and this is, as we take a look at all of our KPIs over the next six months and really prioritize maybe which ones are at the top, staff engagement continues to be, because we really strongly feel like that's a leading indicator to improve student success, is being able to have engaged staff. I know Dr. Hess has talked about just teacher efficacy and the importance of that impact and Dr. Haddie's research, and that this is one of the key measures for us as we look at that. So thank you, Sabrina, for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kemmer, student attendance quarterly written report.
Good evening. So student attendance represents 15% of the engagement and communication core area of our KPI. We use the attendance rate as that measure, and this year, we finished with 92.5%, which places us in the three-star category. We missed four stars by half a percentage point, but we are really right at the state average, which is also 92.5%. Traditionally, we've been at or slightly above state average in not only our overall attendance rate, but then when broken down by various demographic areas, including race, disability status, economic status, gender, English proficiency level, and homeless status, that trend's continued where we've been either at or slightly above state average in most areas. in most areas. One of the other pieces that I included in my report were the number of days that students were out of school due to disciplinary removals, which would include out-of-school suspensions or in-school suspensions. And for this year, we're at 2,321, which is slightly less than last year, and it continues a downward trend, albeit a slight difference from last year, as I mentioned. In our disciplinary removals, in my report, I said accounted for about 4% of total student absences. It's actually closer to 2%. 2%. Actually did the math again today, so I was a little bit off on that. But one of the more concerning things around this data point in particular is the disproportionality, particularly for students who are black or two or more races, where the percentage of days they're removed for disciplinary reasons has remained somewhat steady, while it's decreased for students who are white. So that's something that we're gonna continue to look at and focus on as a part of our equity initiative going forward. One other thing to note is that we are moving to a new data system next year called NextPath, which is replacing EduClima, and that's gonna allow us to disaggregate attendance data a little bit differently, so I think it's going to allow us to notice more subtle changes over shorter periods of time as compared to what EduClima was able to do for us. So I'm excited about that, and how it'll lead us to be able to make quicker decisions related to things like attendance. In terms of going forward, related to attendance specifically, I highlighted back in April some of the things that we were going to be doing, such as automating attendance letters of concern or letters for students who are unexcused for three or more times, updating our attendance codes in Infinite Campus to include a code for medical excuses, changing our 10-minute threshold for absences versus tardies at the elementary level to 30 minutes, and then communicating to families not only these changes, but providing more educational material around attendance. So, those things are all pieces that we're working on this summer, not only me, but our social workers, to make sure we have in place going into next school year.
Questions?
You know, I've got one this one. I'm most interested, I think, in the interplay within the disciplinary and disciplinary removals and all the different places that that impacts a student's experience here. Can you, I don't think that you would know this, seeing as you, like, there's a lot of math involved with all of this, but do you have a sense, or could you at some point for future reports, give us the numbers of what the rates would be for each of the demographic areas but for those disciplinary removals? To show, because I think there is some value in knowing the intentionality of people attending school versus being removed, partially for their own behavior, but or possibly over-disciplining and the impact that that has. Do you have any, I mean, do you have any sense of what it would look like differently? Or?
Yeah, yeah. I wasn't able to pull the numbers together at the last moment, but just generally speaking, if we eliminated disciplinary removals by demographic area, when we look at race in particular, most of our racial categories would be pretty much aligned with one another in terms of absences.
Yeah, okay. The other part that I'm curious about is, I mean, because we've talked about the, these reports are unfortunately very consistent, we make small progress, but I understand that you guys are taking action, that you're doing things. Can you talk a bit about, in particular, you and leadership teams or deans from certain schools with kind of bigger gaps than our already big gaps, or more disperfectionality, have gone to some targeted training? What have you learned from those, and how will that be implemented? And more importantly, when will we see any impact, or what kind of impacts do you think we will eventually see?
Yeah, I think most of the work that we've been doing has been around trying to eliminate subjectivity as much as we can, from our practices, policies, the way we define certain behaviors. I think the more subjectivity you have, the more opportunity for bias comes into play. So that's one of the things that Dr. Miller, or Mr. Miller, has been doing quite a bit of, is going through our handbooks, other documents throughout our district to try to make them more consistent, but then, like I said, remove as much subjectivity as possible from those things. So, another thing that we've been doing along with that kind of alliance is trying to standardize our thought process around not only the behaviors that we're seeing in schools, but then also how we're disciplining students related to those specific behaviors. Again, trying to be more consistent across the board when it comes to those things.
Mr. Wright?
Yeah, I like the taking the subjectivity piece out, because the same as we use over-discipline, I think sometimes we under-discipline too. And I think it goes both ways. Like, an example I've thought about in my mind, like, my kid does something, I probably over-discipline him. They do it in front of my parents, they might get under-disciplined. And I think that we all have biases like that, based on all kinds of different things. So I like when there's less subjectivity and more clarity when it comes to discipline and these types of things. You know, just because we, we have to all admit, we all have biases. I do, you do, you know, and we've had them, and they've been ingrained in us since we were little, and depended upon who and how brought us up. So, that's my comment. I like that we're getting rid of the subjectivity and making things more, trying to make things less biased, because we know that we have those, and we need to try to negate that, because then our bias affects, you know, the child, or the teacher, or however we discipline, right? Like, I mean, I do it myself, so.
I have a question. Do we know how many students this is? We know days, but is, I don't know if it's one student for one day, is it one student for 20 days?
For the disciplinary removals?
Yes.
Yeah, I have data on that, and I'm actually going to be doing our, my SEL report on July 9th, so I can include more in-depth suspension data at that time.
It would be interesting to know how many individuals we're talking about, because I doubt that it's 2,321 individuals.
Yeah, it's definitely not.
I'm wondering, do these days of removal include students who have had a behavioral incident resulting in a conclusion that they should be recommended for expulsion? Because those students are often out for about 15 days before the board votes on them in executive session, and so I'm wondering if those days are included in here or not.
Yeah, any of the days that are coded as an out-of-school suspension would be a part of that. Anything that's an expulsion would not be.
Well, this would be before the board acted.
Prior to, yeah. So, usually those are coded as out-of-school suspensions, or sometimes if a student is a student with special needs, they'll be receiving homebound services during those times, so it really depends on the situation.
Okay, I too, like Mrs. Smutlich, am concerned about the high numbers that remain for two of those subgroups, the students who represent two or more races and the black students. That's very concerning to me, what is going on there. We've implemented conscious discipline, we've implemented behavior interventionists in our schools. I would expect that we would see a decrease in those numbers as we have in the other subgroups as a result of that. And then the training that Mr. Miller and Dr. Coleman, I believe, have engaged in in terms of the ICS program out of UW-Milwaukee. And I'm not saying we should excuse bad behavior, I'm just saying that we should treat students in an equitable manner and not over-discipline in one school as compared to another. I think another comment you had shared at an earlier meeting was that we wanted, the district, you, the district, wanted to make sure that there was consistency from one building to the next in terms of the coding. So, where is the district in terms of that process?
Yeah, yeah, we've done a lot of work in that regard in terms of meeting with principals and deans to make sure that it's understood, you know, what is coded as what. So, like I said, a part of that is really defining which, what behaviors fall under which code. In the past, we've had a lot of different codes, and some of them are redundant. So for instance, like disrespecting and subordination, trying to figure out, you know, which behaviors really would fall under which of those things, can be confusing sometimes. So that's where we've kind of recalibrated to, as best as we can, say, you know, this is the type of behavior that we're talking about when we say disrespect. And again, behaviors are always different, so it's impossible to, you know, think about every single behavior and, you know, say for sure what that would be coded as, but, you know, as well as we can, we try to cover different scenarios in terms of how they would align with the various codes that we have in place.
And one final wondering I have is, under major point H3, there was a note there that the district would change the current 10-minute threshold for unexcused absences at the elementary level, and I believe you just said that would be 30 minutes. What was the, I'm wondering what the rationale was behind that.
So a lot of times, we have families that maybe are experiencing barriers and are working really, really hard to get their child to school, but just don't get there right on time. And sometimes, you know, it might be three minutes late, sometimes it may be 12 minutes late. The important thing is the student is getting to school, and we don't want to penalize students for getting to school a little bit after the day starts, if we know for sure that, you know, they're gonna be there for the majority of the day. So half hour just gives us a little bit more time, it gives parents a little bit more time in the morning to get their child there without having to worry about them being unexcused for the day. So, again, it just kind of changes the threshold from tardy to when we would count that as unexcused absence.
And that's only elementary, correct?
Yeah.
So our high school students don't have to...
Yeah, the challenge we ran into at the middle school and high school is we take attendance by period, so if you start thinking about, you know, 10 minutes versus 30 minutes for a period, 30 minutes is a majority of a class period. So, that's where it got a little bit messy, and we had to keep it at 10 minutes.
Thank you. I know Mr. Wright wants to ask a question.
Oh, no, I just have a comment on what you were discussing in the high school. I have a child who, for a little period of time, no parking pass, sort of find a parking spot on the road at West, and you gotta, if you're running things too close, which happens, and I get an email, then the parking spot will be too far away, and they won't get quite into the first-hour class, and then I'll get a call, and I'll have to help her out. So it happens all over, and then you're recording that, right? And that is a correctable thing, but that's an example, personal example I can use of tardy, this once in a while.
Well, and I also do appreciate the differentiation because of the fact that elementary school gets attendance once a day. And if you only have that 10 minutes, you're out the whole day, whereas if you're late to tardy your first-hour class or your zero-hour class, that's a different story. So I appreciate that you guys have made that distinction and made it very obvious that you're making that distinction.
Yeah. Question? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to committee reports. First up, education committee, Dr. Hess.
Thank you, Ms. Wyman. Education committee met Wednesday, June 4th, at 7:30 a.m. We took up two items. The first one that we took up was professional development, and staff presented a comprehensive plan detailing out a professional development framework for the upcoming year. These were separated out by elementary and secondary levels. At the elementary, there was a lot of CKLA and early literacy. At the secondary level, a lot of it was departments that have identified specific needs that they have. Staff was significantly involved in the professional development plan and were asked where they feel the need and what professional development they would be interested in receiving. Initially, there was a lot of collaboration time scheduled, but after receiving input, that time shifted more to professional development time. Universally, student engagement is low or passive at the secondary level, so professional development techniques will be built upon that knowledge. They've been receiving a lot of feedback from teachers throughout the year, and have talked about the shift, what to shift based on that feedback. Concerns were discussed about rigor and engagement, and explained that feedback given to teachers by principals is checked on a monthly basis and on the executive team level. Trends regarding engagement are monitored on a weekly basis, and if there's an issue, it is discussed at the executive team level and is part of the L10 scorecard. The second item that we discussed were the iReady results. Now, this is a topic that we received a report on at the last board meeting, so I'm gonna be brief about this. But to say what was in addition to what we have already seen was that two consultants from Curriculum Associates did present very detailed information, including domain-level performance. So if you really want to dig in, I'm sure Dr. Coleman or Dr. Brown would be happy to share. In fact, I think the board has received that complete report, but if anybody else wants to see it, I'm sure they would be happy to share that report. So, that's the education committee.
Thank you very much. Facilities and finance, Dr. Herzog.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. The facilities and finance committee met on Thursday, June 12th. We had several agenda items, which generated a good deal of conversation. First of all, Mr. Fox provided an update on the Vell Phillips outdoor athletic facilities, discussing the construction activity on the north side of the field as well as the southeast corner. There had been issues with the demolition contractor regarding elevation errors and improper fill material that were also discussed. Current remediation efforts are underway, or have been undertaken by now, and the need for a change order from Point of Beginning, or POB, architectural firm, were noted. There were also concerns expressed about potential cost implications and accountability for errors made by the demolition contractor, although the overall project schedule, we were advised, has not been significantly impacted. The projected budget for 2025-26 was presented by Mrs. Conrad Peters. She had been working with Mr. Nihans on that project. She noted that the budget is a work in progress because of pending state budget decisions. Concerns about a potential deficit without additional state funding and pupil revenue were expressed, and the committee discussed rightsizing the budget for approximately 9,000 students and consolidation efforts. We also discussed salary benefits and staff compensation, including CPI and step lanes. Discussion ensued regarding potential changes in per pupil funding, special education reimbursement, and Act 20 funds at the state level. The committee also considered enrollment projections and their potential impact on the budget. The fund balance and insurance projections were also discussed, as were potential budget shortfall scenarios and possible cost-saving measures, including staffing ratios. Finally, we also discussed staffing models, and Mrs. Conrad Peters, who'd been working with Mr. Nihans, presented staffing models, including a three-year plan aligned to OEA analysis, with discussion about staffing levels and potential adjustments due to enrollment and budget considerations. There were concerns raised about teacher-to-student ratios and the inclusion of non-classroom teachers in those calculations. The committee discussed the need for a clearer breakdown of classroom teachers versus non-classroom teachers in figuring out those ratios. And finally, middle, excuse me, media specialist staffing levels and access to media centers for students were addressed. We also ended the meeting with a summary of action items to be taken. Those included a POB providing a change order for the remediation work at the track and field site for Vell Phillips, and the civil engineer addressing clay removal and stone replacement issues. Drew Sabrina and others are to develop and present a three-year projected plan for staffing levels and ratios. Staff will provide a, these staff will provide a breakdown of classroom teachers versus non-classroom teachers to share with the board in future reports, and staff will also provide data on the actual student population from last year. Our next meeting will be on August 14th, 2025, at 7:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, legislative committee?
I'll keep this brief. The legislative committee met yesterday morning at 7:30 a.m. We discussed some upcoming legislation that will be decided by our state government and the federal government that'll pertain towards school funding. The biggest topics of discussion were... of discussion were special education reimbursement, and we would like to see that get to 60%. It doesn't seem like that'll be likely. So, but we'll see. And then we also talked about school funding fact sheet and how it would be nice if per pupil increases from the state kept up with inflation and cost. That would be great, but we don't know if that'll happen either. And then Dr. Herzog gave a WASB update where they talked about the legislative proposals as well. So we will have to wait and see what the state and federal budgets end up looking like. So that was, in a nutshell, and we are not, our next meeting will be August 26th, I think I've got on here. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Smutley, Policy and Governance.
So Policy and Governance met on Thursday, June 19th. We first talked about the middle school and high school co-curricular handbooks. And just to clarify comments earlier tonight when we were talking about the listening session, it was in the Policy and Governance Committee meeting where that did come up, talking about things with good standing and different changes related to the number of contests that students missed for certain violations. That was sort of the middle school handbook. I just misspoke. It was in Policy and Governance, and it's always been in the handbooks. So middle school was presented by Mr. Umentum. They did some changes to the handbook related to various things, reflecting the fact that we are in proficiency grading and also there is a limited number of contests. The changes are mostly to be in line with the high school handbooks. At the high school level, there were talks about some minimal changes. Most importantly, the elimination of the athletic fee for most, if not all situations. And that was presented by Mr. Jedarski and Mr. Leader. They talked to us a little bit too about some of the challenges and violations. Truancy seems to be our number one issue across our conference, not just our schools. These come before the committee but do not come to the board for any vote. At least they've historically come before the committee, so it was just for your information. So there was no vote taken on, at the committee level for this. We next discussed the NEOLA process. NEOLA is our contractor, our provider of our policy framework. And so we heard a update or just kind of, a kind of a full, we got a full understanding from our representative, Richard Zimmern, about how NEOLA works and the fact that it's in six states, including some fairly large states. That helps us and them be at the forefront of national legislation that would impact our policies and bylaws. And then within the state of Wisconsin, they serve over 80% of school districts. And I believe seven of the 11 top school district sizes, with Oshkosh being the 11th largest district. And we also, they also then obviously work on, all the way down to school districts as low as 100 students to work on Wisconsin-level policy changes. They provide us policies on, up to 450 policies a year. Thank goodness we do not have quite all of those, I don't think. And administrative guidelines, as well as all of the yearly annual notices that we must receive. So it is an important, useful services that if nothing else, it always provides us a start on our policies. From this discussion with Richard, we've made some, from some changes with how we handle policy updates in the committee, where we will be looking at three different buckets of policies. Legal compliance, which is basically we need to comply and we don't really have much say. Those will all be put into a consent agenda to be forwarded to the board. Then there's also best practices, where there's not a specific rule from the law saying it, but looking at and deferring in general to the administrations, our, our local administrations' suggestions and recommendations. And then the third bucket is public policy, which is rarely where the board gets down and dirty figuring out what's right for our district. Related to this, also trying to streamline things and make sure that we're working on substantive changes in the future in our, our committee meeting. We were reminded of the policy 0131.1, where technical updates will no longer be voted on by the board and can be implemented with notification to the board by the superintendent. Technical updates are literally technical updates that do not, that are usually wording corrections or typographical errors. The policies that we discussed were not that many in detail at this particular meeting. Policy 7544, use of social media, was formally moved forward via motion to the, to tonight's agenda. We also then spent some time working with Ms. Johnson about the employee handbook. And in the future, this will likely be handled by the Employee Relations Committee of the Board when we get that into existence. But we reviewed all of the changes and updates that we have been talked about in various different situations now. And also, this was put forward to the board for a vote tonight. There were also, obviously, for this one meeting, there were a lot of technical updates that we put in a consent agenda, also all put forward tonight. In the future, those will merely be going, be implemented without our, without our direct information, but they will be shared with the board. Next meeting is August 25th, excuse me, August 21, 2025, at 7:30 a.m. I think back down to a one-hour meeting, hopefully.
Yay. Thank you very much, everyone, for your reports. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Everyone has been furnished with the description of the consent agenda and how it works. Is there a motion for the consent agenda? So move, Barb.
Second, Kelly. Hess.
Aye.
Smutley.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Next, we move on to number 11, individually considered resolution. And this is to establish parameters for the sale not to exceed 79, 800,000, 79 million 800,000 general obligation school, building, and facility improvement bonds. Mr. Nihans.
Good evening. So this resolution slightly different than the way we have?
It's a resolution where we need to have a motion and a second in order to discuss?
Yes, we do. Yes.
Second. Wright and Herzog?
Sure.
Yes. Thank you. Sorry, Drew.
Nope, thank you.
No, all good.
So this resolution is slightly different than what we've done since I've been in the district on issuing bonds. Typically, we would issue the bonds the day of the resolution, and then the board would approve what the, with the final interest rate and, and what the specifics of the bonds are later on that, that same board meeting day. What the parameters resolution is, is it doesn't change how we issue the bonds or sell the bonds or anything with it. It just provides more flexibility that it didn't happen today. And then the president and vice president are available on the day of the sale, that they come in and sign the documents that are provided for you on behalf of the board, that they understand that the sale was made within the parameters of this resolution. So same overall process for the bonds, just a little bit different within the interaction of the school board to the sale of the bonds. So what the specifics of the bond issuance this time is, is it's the 79.8 million dollars. And why we don't do all of the referendum dollars at one time, we are restricted by law for how long we have to spend the, the money when we issue it. We also have what's called arbitrage penalties. If you issued it all at one time and you were going to take five years to spend it, you have a much longer period of time to gain interest off of that lump sum, which if you exceed what your borrowing interest rate is, you have a penalty called arbitrage. So part of the parameters of keeping it a shorter time period to use the bond money also helps you try to avoid any penalties on the gaining too much interest, since these are non-tax bonds. So it's the 79.8 million. Right now, the projects that we are working on that this money will be spent on are the projects associated with the Carl Trager Elementary, Oakwood Elementary, Franklin Elementary, and then our air conditioning at the three buildings that we have, that work will start next summer. So portions or all of those projects will be paid with this first issuance of just under 80 million dollars. Are there any questions at all?
I'll just, just make a quick comment, and you answered this, Facilities and Finance. We came up with the, the idea for a parameters, or asked for a parameters resolution to ensure that we're not putting the district in a position where it has to issue bonds right after there might be an issue with tariffs or global conflict where there's a spike in rates. We want to just make sure that we're getting the best possible rate.
Correct. That, again, that is part of the, the flexibility we're going to get by this. Typically, it would be done the, the morning of the, the board meeting. So right now, we're, we're targeting early July. But again, it's going to depend on how we, the market is looking as we approach those dates. If the market's not looking real good as we get into July, on July 1st, we will postpone and hold, and, and we have flexibility within when we can try to target that. Cool, thank you.
Dr. Hess?
So I too just have a few comments. I think I have been known to vote no on most things associated with the payback of the previous referendum bonds. And that, I generally took issue with what was told to the taxpayers previously and how we were following through. In this particular case, and I, I personally voted no on this referendum in the first place, but the community said yes to this. And so far, everything that I have seen suggests that we are planning to follow through with exactly what we have told them. So in this case, I can fully support this resolution. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Smutley.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Nihans.
Thank you very much.
A request for future agenda items? Announcements?
Kelly Hess.
I'm sorry.
I, I don't know that this is, yes, actually it is. I'm just wondering if we could get some type of follow-up. I, I think Barb had mentioned something about it at the last meeting in regards to the family that had come and that boy Lincoln, if we could get a follow-up in regards to that, please.
Is that noted? Thank you. Dr. Hess?
I have an announcement. At the last board meeting, during the conversation about the I-ready results, I made an assertion about my belief as to where a report that suggested that we were going to increase I-ready scores by 10% in math and 8%, and I, I think I had suggested that, Dr. Coleman, I attributed that to you. I have gone back and looked and, and found that in fact, it was the superintendent that made that. So I made that comment in public. I was wrong about that comment, and so I'd like to apologize to Dr. Coleman in public. I made a mistake, and if I make a mistake, I won't acknowledge it. So my apologies, Dr. Coleman.
Thank you.
You too.
Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. I had an opportunity last week to represent the Wisconsin Association of School Boards at Badger Girl State and spoke to a group of about 60 or 70 girls. They had a lot of questions, many of those dealing with banning of books. And then I joined Mr. Nihans yesterday in grand shoot at a meeting for the Wisconsin Public Education Network, which was covered in the local media. And finally, while we were having our board self-evaluation last week, I was, I was elected to the CISA 6th Board of Control as the Vice President.
Yay.
So, thank you. So I am pleased to continue to serve in that role representing our district. Thank you.
That's great. Any other announcements?
I have one quick one. So, and again, we recognized Linda prior to, like in her retirement announcement, but this is her last meeting also. So I, I also want to just recognize again, Linda, for all of your service, both from a district standpoint, from the community's standpoint. You will be greatly missed, as we discussed before, but just as a formal recognition. Thank you for all of your years of service. And, and we know a second person in Florida. So, you know, sometimes we'll just give them both a heads up. So I, thank you, Linda, for, for everything you've done for, for our kids and families.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I move.
Perfect.
Oh, someone has to move it first. Dr. Hess moved it, I believe. I seconded it.
Yeah.
Wyman.
Yes.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Smutley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.